Do we have a motion that we exit executive session, the senior?
Motion moved.
Thank you, Mr. Egan, a second. Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor? Okay, Ms. Perkins, give us certification for executive visit tonight.
Madam Chair, I'm going to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion to go into executive session, were heard, discussed, or considered in executive session.
Yes.
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 We'll have the pledge denied?
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hoover, we have any delegations. Would anyone like to address the board at this time?
You're gracious, and all our daughters who bow down in the loving name of your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We want to thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us. Thank you, God, for sending your son to cross. Thank God raising him on the third day, giving us life. Thank God we're still in the country of freedom, being able to pray, being able to worship you. We come before you tonight, Lord, to ask you to touch our school board, to give them wisdom, give them wisdom, your Lord, to discern between right and wrong, truth and falsehood. God, that you give them wisdom, Lord, give them strength and boldness, Lord, to stand on what's right. We thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us for this counting. We ask you to remember him tonight, and help him to be with us sick. Would you pass by and touch him? Not only him, but the rest of our sick. Remember little Tanner got to come home yesterday. Would you strengthen that family? Would you save our lost people, Lord? Would you bless the church in it, as we try to always pray, Lord, that thy will be done? In Jesus' name, amen.
Would anyone else like to address the board? For our public comment tonight, I'd like to remind everyone that each speaker is limited to three minutes. And this is to ensure that all individuals who wish to speak have an opportunity to be heard. When you come to the podium, please state your name clearly and for the record. I'll calmly ask you to conclude your remarks when your time is up.
My name is Candace Nicole Hall, and I'm from Casswood, Virginia. I have three children that attend Casswood Elementary, Casswood Middle, and Casswood High School. I just had a private meeting with the school board members. This meeting involved an incident that happened to my daughter on October 24th. I got a call on October 24th from Casswood Elementary that told me that my daughter had been hit by a substitute teacher in the class. I didn't get this call until 2:30 PM, even though the incident had happened that morning. The school tried to assure me that my daughter was okay, and then I found out the school board didn't even have a meeting set up with me, or even tried to have a meeting set up with me. I had to call myself and set up a meeting. When I finally got to have a meeting with Mr. Mullins, Ms. Jent, and Georgia McCoy, along with the principals at the elementary, I found out that the principal had already asked the kids in the class what had happened. And all of them stated that they had seen my daughter, all these kids in the class stated that they had seen my daughter be slapped by the substitute teacher. My daughter's under a 504 plan as well, and they stated that my daughter was yawning and stretching out, which says that she's allowed to do, and she was slapped on the hand by the teacher. Come to find out, there had been three other incidents, two other incidents, other than this investigation with the same substitute teacher, which also has multiple witnesses with that same substitute. There was even a video that I was not allowed to watch, but the principal told them that you... There was even a video that a student had took that I was not allowed to watch, but the principal told the board member, not the board members, but those same individuals, the three individuals, that you could hear my daughter ask the sub why she slapped me. The school policy states that as soon as assault happens, and they are supposed to be notified to Kim Hooker, and she's supposed to notify the school board. And to drive a private meeting, even though this incident took place on October 24th, I found out that none of the school board members had even been made aware. When this happened, I asked, I called and asked Kim Hooker, because my daughter has such a kind heart, that the substitute lady was seventy-seven years old, and she did not want to press charges on this lady because she had told the class that she had lost her husband. So my daughter did not want to press charges on her. So I tried to call Kim Hooker, got hold of her, and asked Kim Hooker when this event happened, and asked her if she could guarantee my daughter's safety to make sure that this substitute teacher was not going to be allowed back in the school, because I did not want to press charges on the individual. Kim Hooker could not confirm that. She said it's still under investigation, even though you're higher up, your three individuals, Mr. Mullins, Ms. Jent, and Georgia, had heard the principal say that every student in that class was asked if my daughter was assaulted, and they all stated yes, and what had happened. So she could not confirm my daughter's safety. How can we expect the school to protect our children when they don't even follow policy or seek legal... I have to now personally seek legal actions for my daughter.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Since our meeting last month that I attended, I spoke with Ms. Hooker regarding some situations that happened with my youngest son in his patch year alone. And I do apologize, because since I was in there with Ms. Hall, hearing that debate, I didn't think to bring it up to ask if the school board had been made aware of that. So I just wanted to take a moment to ask now, of all the different things that we discussed involving my minor child, my youngest child. That's how it took place since the beginning of school year, or since the beginning of the physical year this year. So just in this year, has the school board members been made aware of all those situations?
I think you made them aware in the last board meeting when you were discussing those.
No, I didn't discuss my youngest son's situations. I only brought up a vague discussion about my oldest son. I didn't mention all the different situations that my youngest son went through. But I was going to tell you, my youngest son...
Well, ma'am, if it's... It might be something that we need to go to the back executive. I'll leave this up to you. Or she's... It's fine. Okay.
I was just going to try to be...
I didn't get your name again.
Angela Ellis.
Okay.
I was going to try to be as vague as possible. Back during baseball season, we had situations with the middle school baseball coaches leaving the middle school team unsupervised on numerous occasions. Numerous occasions that I, myself, and other parents had reached out to the high school principals about. And I was, I know personally, I was assured that it would not happen again. And within a week, it was less than a week later that they were not only just the middle school team, but the middle school and JV loaded up on the activity bus and driven to a game where they did not have a coach to supervise. The only adult on the bus was the bus driver, Roy Glover, who was driving, and one of their volunteers, Frank, neither of which were equipped with preventing my youngest child from being assaulted on the bus from an incident, a situation that had went well over forty-five minutes, an hour arising to the point where the other student actually physically attacked my son, and he was forced to have to defend himself for basically against his attacker, until the other student on the bus was able to pull him off of my side and tried to separate him. There was no adult intervening whatsoever. None. When I arrived to the school, I wanted to speak with Mr. Sparks, and the head coach, not the middle school coaches, but the head coach, I was not permitted to do so. I was met by Ms. Franklin instead, who told me that Mr. Sparks had other... That he wasn't available to be there to talk to me. And so I was waiting to talk, to speak to Mr. Neese, and as I'd already sent him a message informing that I was waiting to talk to him, and I wasn't permitted to do so. Instead, I was told that I had to leave school property, or I was going to get the law called on me for trespassing at that point. Then, once football season started, oh, sorry, I was told that both of those coaches, I was assured, I was assured that both of those coaches would no longer be allowed to coach. Also, when I spoke with Ms. Hooker, she reassured me of that, that those coaches were no longer going to be allowed to coach, one of which coached football when football season started. And then, the other one is coaching a youth wrestling program that takes place at and through the school. It's not directly, I'm not sure. I guess y'all say it's not directly affiliated with the school? Because it's a youth program, and they're just allowed to use their property? But there's that, and then...
It's three minutes, Ms. Ellis. I think maybe...
That same volunteer, though, when football season started, he showed my youngest son as well. So...
Have you addressed all these with her, with Dr. Hooker?
Yes.
And I've talked to the principal.
And that was a month ago. And now we're finding out that y'all still haven't been made aware.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dan Hooker. I work with Holland's Emergency Air Rescue and Transport for when those wings air rescued. Thank you everybody for coming here with our medical helicopters to take them to the hospital if some of that happens to you. I spoke earlier in the year with, I guess, Subcommittee of the Insurance Committee from the school system. It's taken me a while to be able to get to the school board, to present to the school board. I know we're in the middle of open enrollment. Just the way it said, October, November, for January first, effective April, these type of things. If we could, we could make it happen this year. But whatever AirMedCare Network is, everybody's coming here with the helicopters. Everybody's coming here with the costs associated with having to be flown to a facility, which in this time, nearest trauma centers or Johnson City are running. Speaking with folks in this area, Russell County, Tazewell County, most folks are telling me that that flight bill is about sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Those flights are most of the time defined by health insurance, just because health insurance doesn't put it in as an in-network benefit, just because they don't pay. I'm sure everybody here's thought with insurance companies over twenty or thirty dollars a trip, and a whole lot more feasible than a six-year, seventy thousand dollar helicopter. But whatever AirMedCare Network does, it covers the employee and their entire household. And if a member of ours gets flown on any of our aircraft, which we have about four hundred across the country, you don't get a flight bill. Your membership covers that entire flight bill. I know there was a couple of things that were brought up after the insurance committee meeting as part of logistics for payment. That can be worked out where the school system is not bearing brunt or any risk for payroll deduction. After it gets payroll deducted, it will then be remitted to AirMedCare Network, so the school system wouldn't be bearing any of the financial responsibility. Also, about insurance coverage, which like I said, a lot of times insurance doesn't cover. Best case scenario, if it does, you're still responsible for your out-of-pocket maximums, or dividends, and things like that, which most of us don't have, five or ten thousand dollars laying around to be able to cover an out-of-pocket maximum.
So are you offering this to our employees?
Yes, it will be offered to the employees, school board, and all, everybody that's involved gets paycheck from Russell County Schools. You guys are actually about the, I cover eleven counties in Southwest Virginia, and Russell County Schools is about the last one that does not offer to employees.
How? I guess, I guess we're going to be going over three minutes or whatever, but to help the employees, I guess you need to cut to the fat, and what kind of cost is this payroll that they want to be?
About how many employees was this?
Around six, seven.
So a year membership for an entity that has about six hundred employees, a year membership is going to cost sixty-five dollars?
So each teacher would be deducted sixty-five dollar paycheck if they choose, if they choose today? And it's a choice?
Yes.
Okay.
Sixty-five a year. For their entire household.
For their entire family?
Entire household.
Yeah.
So if my parents, if I had to look my parents in, take care of them, they would be covered under my household membership. It has no bearing on age or relationship. As long as they live under that roof in that household, they're covered under...
So not paycheck a year?
Year.
Sixty-five dollars a year for one employee, and it's an option whether they want to take it or not?
Will that, will that rate stay the same if you have one hundred fifty employees, or does it have a minimum?
So that, that, I guess, group is five hundred to nine hundred ninety-nine. So as long as we stay between five hundred and a thousand employees, that rate's going to be fair, unless we have a rate decrease, which brings up our other options that we do have. We have three-year, five-year, ten-year membership, which is also a well for the employee. A ten-year option is a hundred and sixty-five dollars for three years. A five-year membership is two twenty-five. A ten-year membership is five thirty-five. So if we do like Washington County school systems did the last two or three years, and payroll deducted in January, February, and March, I have two paychecks per month. That's six deductions. That works out to the ten-year membership being eighty-nine dollars for the employee, and that would be covered, their entire household would be covered for that.
And like you said, the school system does not brunt any of the upfront costs, correct?
The school system will make those two payroll deductions in January, and then remit that back to AirMedCare Network, do the same thing in February, the same thing in March, and if that employee's paid up for whatever option they wanted to do, whether it be one, three, five, or ten-year.
Could you give us some information based on each, like how you would break it down if there was a hundred employees, hundred to two hundred, or two hundred to three hundred? Can you give us some information?
I've got a little flyer that I can email you, but the breakdown was three to one ninety-nine, five to nine hundred ninety-nine employees.
So we would actually have to know how many of our people wanted to participate?
That's employee count. That's not having to use a discount.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
I don't mind how many.
Don't mind how many signs.
That's what I was thinking.
Besides that, we have four different things to give those rates.
Myself, I'd like to see it happen. It seems like a good option.
We have places in Marion, Greenville, Elizabethan, Jameson, and Harles, there are five places. So we've got a lot of companies that can be here with them.
And besides that flight, you are the only ones that...
Yes, Virginia State Police is a member. They are taxpayer-funded, taxpayer-funded agency, so they don't tell her. Every county in Southwest Virginia, we have parentage, fifteen years, I'm not sure. Every county in Southwest Virginia calls for Virginia State Police first. They have one, they have five. So I'll draw them. If you need a five, you're going in the plus instead of most likely.
So you would make cabin room which?
Marion, Greenville, Elizabethan, Harles, and Nick.
Stand up for Nick.
Well, I was just inquiring, sorry to interrupt. Is this only for emergency flights, or would this include transports? Because I know...
Interfacility transports from facility to facility.
Right, so sometimes you have, like, there'd be a transport from Johnson Memorial to Chattanooga.
Absolutely.
That would cover that.
And there's no limits to the number of flights for them. So if you're in a car crash, and like there was a fiery one I saw on the news a couple days ago, so you get burned, you get flown to Johnson City, the trauma center says, nope, we got to fly you to Wake Forest to learn there, both of those flights would be covered. There's no maximum to the number of flights.
Deductible?
Nope. Make the membership, the membership covers that flight completely.
Almost sounds too good, Peter.
That's not very good. When he comes up to me, that's what I said. I said, "Sounds like we should be doing this all along."
We are one of the few companies out there where it works out better if people might join our membership. But the way that we make it work is if you're a member, on the backside, after you get flown, we can send you a letter that says, "Hey, thanks for being a member. If you do have health insurance, please do this out, so we can work with your health insurance, try to get something for you." Now, if they say, "Yep, we're going to take you some on this helicopter deal," great, we give some other advice. If they don't, you're still a member, you still don't give a...
I do know the county signed on with him, so did the town.
Well, I'm here. I have the town of Lebanon, Hollenaker, Secret Grove, Richlands, working with Kate Garrett and Amen, Angie Levinson, Bristol, Marion, Resol, Bladen. Those three all pay for it for their employees. As far as rescue entities, Lebanon Life saving, Casswood Fire Rescue, Bristol Life saving Crew, Washington County Life saving Crew, County Gownlets, Russell, Tazewell, Washington, working with Sulu, already have students at the monument. As far as school system, we work at the town, Lido, Tazewell, Washington, so it's about everybody. Why don't you, y'all, look on the last one for what first make it?
Do we need a motion to allow this, for us to do this?
Do you have an option for our employees?
Make an option for the employees.
Does that need a motion?
Can we do that now, or do we need to wait till the...
I think you do.
Okay. I like to make a motion that we make this an option to the employees for the AirMedCare option in the Russell County Public Schools.
My say.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Uh, any opposed? Thank you for coming.
Y'all want to apologize for going over three minutes?
He needs to get up.
I think you need to put in there that this is employee funded.
Okay. On the minutes.
What?
What, where do you want me to put it? In the motion?
In the motion.
Okay.
They're going to pay your own.
I can amend that, that's fine.
You want to go ahead and add?
I can. I make a motion, or I amend my previous motion, to allow AirMedCare to give the option to our employees, and it be the cost-bearing to the employees, not this, not this school system. And it would be deducted out of their paycheck, I guess yearly.
Twice a month.
Or twice a month?
Twice a year.
Twice a year? Okay.
It would have to be monthly for us, because the way our payroll works, it would have to be ten deductions like the rest of our voluntary deductions work.
Okay.
The most that we can do as far as reimbursement is three consecutive months payments. So that's why I was suggesting we do like Washington County does, y'all do two paychecks a year. Just one, okay? So then do that out of each month, January, February, and March, then they're done, their pay for it in the three months.
We would have to work that out with our payroll. I honestly don't think it will be decent for this.
Well, I'll leave that out of it, and that would be my motion, and I'll let him work that out with you all when y'all... That'll work. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All in favor? Are you good? Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, Madam Chair. Do we have any adjustments for the agenda tonight, Dr. Perkins?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two. The first one is the involving the consequences breaking the drug rules, involving alcohol, Schedule Five, Schedule Six, marijuana possession, and imitation drugs. That needs to move from the action item to the information item for the first reading. And then the second one is action item number two. I would ask the board to take that to a future board meeting that we can discuss.
Okay, do you want to designate the date for that board meeting?
Yes, we could do that on November the tenth at four PM, and that would be a special call meeting.
Do you have anything else?
No.
I need a motion that we finalize our agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we need a approval of the meeting minutes of October the second. Do I have a motion that we...
I made that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ball, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Obstain I wasn't there.
You were busy.
Yep.
Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Georgia McCoy to come forward, who helped with recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Russell County School Board. We haven't had recognitions in a few months, and we had to postpone our Teacher and Employee of the Month for September, and so we're going to recognize those first. Our Teacher of the Month for September was from Homnaker Elementary School, Ms. Amy Hess. So she'll come forward, along with Ms. Jennifer Eaton, her principal. I'd like to read your recognition nomination. Dear selection committee, it is a great pride and sincere admiration that I nominate Amy Hess for Teacher of the Month. Amy exemplifies everything an outstanding educator should be: compassion, dedication, resilient, and relentlessly student-focused. She consistently goes above and beyond to meet the unique and complex needs of her students, creating a learning environment where every child feels valued, supported, and capable of success. As a self-contained special education teacher, Amy navigates a demanding role of grace known to waver in commitment. She tailors instruction to each student's individual learning style, celebrates even the smallest victory, and ensures that her classroom is a place of safety, structure, and growth. Whether it's spending extra time preparing customized materials, collaborating with families, or advocating for her students' needs, Amy does it all with professionalism. Her colleagues often speak of her willingness to lend a hand, offer insight, and share strategies that benefit not just her students, but the school community as a whole. Amy's presence uplifts those around her and inspires us and staff alike. Amy Hess is not just a teacher, she's championing her students and a pillar of our school. Her impact reaches far beyond her classroom hours, and she is truly deserving of this recognition. So congratulations. She is what's safe to work.
Well, I think that pretty much sums it up, and I am so thankful that Amy's in our building, and she does make a difference in this people. And we love her.
This acknowledges that Amy Hess, Homnaker Elementary School, has been named Teacher of the Month. If you'll go with Ms. Angie Farmer, she's going to take her pictures tonight. Okay, our Employee of the Month for September, that's Ms. Jessica Fuller. She is a Casswood Elementary Instructional Aid. So she'll come forward with Mr. Adam Pageant. I'd like to read her nomination. Ms. Jessica deserves this recognition for a multitude of reasons. Jessica started at school as a substitute teacher a few years ago, and always did an outstanding job, so much so, when the need for a full-time aid rose, she was the obvious choice. She graces our hallways with positivity and professionalism. She has a smile and words of encouragement for everyone whose path she crosses on a daily basis. She treats students in her care with respect, nurturing, and so much love. It is evident in the manner in which she carries out every aspect of her daily duties, and she is passionate about the education and well-being of her students, and she epitomizes the vision of Russell County Public Schools. Ms. Jessica is more than deserving of this recognition. We are blessed to have her at Casswood Elementary School.
All those things are very true. She truly is the most positive, cheerful person in our building. When it comes time to try to have an A in the classroom, everybody wants Ms. Jessica. So that says enough right there. I think there's going to be a lot next year to figure out who Ms. Jessica works with. We are extremely happy to have her. The kids love her. She makes my life very, very nice. Um, she makes my life very, very good.
Ms. Fuller, Castlewood Elementary School has been named Support Staff Employee of the Month. Okay, our next recognition is for the October Teacher of the Month, and that goes to Ms. Renee Dewey, Castlewood Elementary School Teacher of Technology. She'll come forward, and Mr. Pageant will be here shortly. She's been under the weather, but doing better now. I'm thankful she's here tonight. Ms. Renee deserves this recognition for a multitude of reasons. Ms. Renee is a veteran educator who has served in many roles during her tenure at Castlewood Elementary. She demonstrated excellence as a master classroom teacher for many years. For the past last two years, she has continued her teaching excellence in the role as one of her Ted Lab teachers. In addition, she has taken on the added responsibilities and duties as both SOF Coordinator and Instructional Coach. Everyone should appreciate the fact that this is a... This is a tremendous amount of work for a one person when added to their regular teaching duties and responsibilities. However, Ms. Renee handles this workload with gratitude, professionalism, and positivity. She treats their students with respect and so much love and understanding. She always is available to answer any technological questions that students or teachers may have. And if she doesn't have the answer, she will always reach out to others until the problem is solved. We are beyond blessed to have such a dedicated profession who is willing to carry so much with such conviction and confidence. She is so deserving of this recognition because Russell County Public Schools is so lucky to have someone like Ms. Renee. She sees her vision and works tirelessly to carry out air med.
She taught, she taught my three boys in Maylin. We truly are blessed. Uh, two years ago, uh, Dr. Hooker put Ms. Renee with me when I was a terrible teacher. And it was wonderful because she taught me, stood me under her wings, she didn't have to. Uh, and taught me how to, I'm a very good teacher. Uh, funny story, my wife actually came to observe Ms. Renee um, when we first got married, uh, because she was going to be a teacher. And she came back to me because she had observed me, and she said, wow, you stink, why can't you be like Ms. Renee? It was her worst day, and I told my wife, I said, I'm trying really hard. Uh, it's not working. But, uh, really truly, Ms. Renee has done that for me. She's done that for several teachers in my building. Uh, I watched her teach kids how to, to do math six or seven different ways until they get it. Um, the kids love her, and, uh, all of her teachers in the building love her, and, and I couldn't do it without her, so.
This acknowledges that Renee Dewey, Castlewood Elementary School, has been named Teacher of the Month. And our last recognition for, um,
Sorry?
October is our Employees of the Month, and it goes to two individuals. I'm sorry, Dennis Akers, no, that's incorrect. Christopher Hale and...
And David Ring.
And David Ring, I'm sorry, I forgot those names. Uh, the nomination did not mention them by name, but they nominated them by Custodial Staff at Russell County Career Technology Center. So if they'll come forward along with Mr. Rastigni. Like your nomination? They are some of the hardest working people I've had the pleasure of working with. From the time they clock in to the time they clock out, they're always busy. Even though they get pulled from their job numerous times throughout the day, they're always willing to lend a helping hand, and everyone's complaining. They are truly the backbone of our school, and we're very lucky to have them. So congratulations.
This is Mr. Dean Saper. He's our custodian that's on a, a long-term disability right now.
Okay.
Uh, Chris was unable to be here with us tonight, but I wanted Dennis to come with us tonight. He's faced a lot of adversity here in the last, uh, seven months. He's, uh, had to have a open-heart surgery. He's had chemo, he's had, uh, radiation, and he suffered now with two months of shingles. And this man is a tough man. And he's, uh, and he's an old veteran, and he's one that has served our school for the last three years. Uh, I mean, every day, he's always at work. They do an excellent job. It's a little different for, uh, being a custodian in a vocational school than a normal school because, uh, a lot of extra dirt and things, and shops, and, uh, uh, all the, uh, masonry dust and all through the halls. It, it, it really takes a lot of effort to be able to keep our building. Have you ever been in the Russell County Career Technology Center? Who would say that it's one of the cleanest buildings you'll find in the county? And it all is these guys right here. I, you know, I'm, I'm proud of them for the work that they do, their dedication. Uh, and, uh, I couldn't ask for any, any better, you know, always.
Christopher Hale, Custodian at Russell County. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said me listening here. David Ring, Custodian, Russell County Career Technology Center, has been a Support Staff Employee of the Month. And I do have Mr. Akers', uh, certificate upstairs. I wasn't aware that you were going to be here tonight.
Very good for you.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm telling you, we... I slept there the other night for the advisory dinner, and as soon as you walk through the doors, that's the first thing you notice is how shiny the floors are and everything that's, and it's great. It's a big building.
Okay, our next recognition, uh, is for our, uh, Virginia School Boards Association. It's a award of recognition for your commitment to effective school board governance, governance, and about, uh, your participation in the Virginia School Board Association Board Academy two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. This is the be counted.
I was going to go down and shake her hand.
The next award of recognition for your commitment to effective school board governance and your participation for the Virginia School Board Association School Board Academy two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, best of Mrs. Lyndale Care. And our last recognition, award of recognition, uh, for your commitment to effective school board governance and your participation in the Virginia School Board Association School Board Academy two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five, best of Dr. Hooker. And Dr. Hooker, that concludes the recognitions for tonight.
Okay, do we, takes us down to the bills and the accounts? Do we have a motion that we pay the bills tonight?
I'll make a motion we pay our bills.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, we're to the retirements.
Yes, ma'am, we do have, yes, we do have a few resignations and retirements for the board to approve tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, we're to our new hires and transfers.
Yes, ma'am, again, we do have a few of the personal, uh, agenda for the new hires and transfers to be approved tonight.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No action items, it's actually listed here, but it didn't move down to information items. It is the first reading of the Addendum of Consequences for Breaking the Drug Policy that we amended at the beginning. It should be under, uh, information items.
Okay. Do you have any other updates?
Uh, only one, there was also a first reading of policy, and that's on the homeschool policy. Uh, it's actually minimal changes, it's just what we can, uh, the information that we can and cannot give on homeschool students.
No, it's a first reading. Okay. Okay, the October sales tax, three hundred ninety-two thousand eight sixty-three fourteen, ADM three thousand fifty-four as of nine thirty twenty twenty-five. The maintenance report. Any board member have anything you want to say with the maintenance or expenditure report? Okay, our next school board meeting, again, November the tenth at four P M. Well, I did that.
Okay.
Asked them anything for the expenditure report.
I've got something before we close, if you don't care, Chairlady. Uh, I'd like for the school board to, uh, get a plaque uh, recognizing Tanner Hart and Henson as our local community heroes, uh, in Russell County. Uh, and I don't know if we need a motion or for that or what.
I think he can just request, can he? Yes, you can just request, we can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to request that we do that and, uh, present that to the family. I don't know if they can come, but we, we can get it to them. Uh, but for Henson and Tanner Hart, two, two young children that's battling cancer in our community.
And we need a motion, I guess, to pay the bills. Did I overdo that?
We did that, they did that.
We did that.
Yeah.
Got you.
You're down to the date of the next school board meeting.
Okay, you want to...
And the, and the date of the, uh, school board meeting next month will be December the ninth. That's changed because we need that time after Thanksgiving break uh, for them to get the bills together for you guys. So that's the reason it's going to be on December the ninth next month. And then also, we do have a special pop meeting that will be on November the tenth at four P M.
Madam Chair, I'd like to update. I've been asked several times tonight about Mr. Parsons. He is getting in the hospital, he is improving every day. He had a very serious surgery. But he is improving, hopefully, we agree on that. That's good.
Okay, the Thanksgiving break will be November the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. And you said you would like to have a, the V S B A would like a picture of all of us.
Yes, well, you can adjourn, and then we can take the picture.
Okay, do we, anything else with the board? And you have Castlewood High School?
Castlewood.
Castlewood High School?
Yeah. We thank Castlewood High School for arriving in the middle of the night.
At least.
Yes. Can I make a motion?
We thank everyone for coming, and thank you, Ms. Music. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, all in favor?